Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to start. Can you all put your phones, can you all mute your phones, please? And just a reminder, we all love work, Clark. We can agree to disagree. Everybody's gonna have their say. Let's be mindful of everyone else's feelings and considerations, please. Nothing personal in none of this. So everybody just, everybody will have their say, everybody. Thank you.
About five o'clock, I'm gonna call the special meeting to order. We have a forum with all directors present. If you could stand for a moment a second. For the Platoon meetings.
We are the leaders of the true flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, liberating and sovereign. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas on safe, under God, one individual.
Be acquitted. I still do not have that for me. All right, the first item for discussion is the pool.
We can't hear you. Am I talking on?
Okay, the first discussion item is the pool. And Julia's gotten us the numbers from this weekend. I'll just give the rundown. We had 160 County residents, 56 non-residents, 62 RV guests, 51 motel guests, 556 members, and 41 member guests. A total of 981 guests and members for Memorial Weekend, which is awesome. And the revenue is $1,425. And we just wanted to kind of give a brief synopsis on how the pool was filled. John's gonna give that.
Good evening. Just want to let everybody know what we did. Of course, the motion was to fill the pool with mud water and possibly chlorinated. We were extremely lucky we got enough head pressure in the well or in the spring. For those that don't know, the mud measures their well every Monday as required. And on Monday, Randy said that the well was going up and had plenty of water to put in the pool. When him and Phillip got together and figured out a plan, they both decided that the best thing was probably to not drain the head pressure off of the spring. Phillip did a great job clogging up the spillway so that we could capture that water as well. But the idea, and of course, they're the experts, I'm not, especially Randy. Randy said that draining the head pressure off of the spring may or may not cause it to flow as well. So the idea was to put the spring wa, put the well water in and then let the spring water flow. And if you've been down there today, it's still flowing very strong today. So it worked out really well. We're really blessed for that. Hopefully with the rain continuing, it'll continue to flow. And God willing, we won't have to shut it down for the rest of summer.
That was basically all. We wanted to just let everybody know how the weekend went and how the pool was filled so that everybody knows. Unless somebody has anything else about the pool that they would like to...
Can I just ask what the distinction is between well water and mud water? We understood some of us it was being filled with chlorinated water.
Well, chlorinated, technically, yes. It has a one-part permeated chlorinated water. It's the same water you drink, and as soon as it's being put in the pool, that chlorine is being evaporated. So I don't know, you know, I don't know what the measure amount would be, but it's safe to drink. I'm sure it's safe for fish to swim in, so...
Except that I understand that the municipal water also has chlorine in it, which does not dissipate in sunlight and has to be physically removed because it's toxic to fish.
Okay, well, we will follow up with mud and ask that question. I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Because it matters extremely about what you do with the pool water when you let it go or in every pool.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. What was that last statement?
You know, there's chlorine in the municipal water by law, and it's cannot, it does not dissipate in sunlight, unlike chlorine. It's there to enhance the clarity, and you have to physically remove it from the water because it's toxic to fish.
We will, I'll personally follow up with mud and get the answer to that, okay?
Just, I just, issue with that, though, with the rate of spring is flowing, it's putting out a sufficient amount of water to, how are you to lose the chlorine that might be in the pool as it's slowly going out into the creek throughout the property? So probably not a big issue at all.
Maybe people wonder what the form mean is.
Yeah, I have a song on the dictionary with 160 gallons. I haven't even figured out what that is yet.
We're talking about chlorine. You have to physically take it out of the water before you put it into a public water because it's toxic for fish, and it does not dissipate in sunlight.
Well, and we're gonna check on that.
It's my understanding that the water came straight out of the well. The water in the well is not chlorinated at all. They went straight out of the well, went into the pool. If they were gonna keep it here for a week, they would have to put some chlorine in it to add to it to make the, the water not get, build up algae and so forth. But straight out of the well, it's pure water, same as the spring water. Now I got this ranting. So I don't think there's any chlorine in there whatsoever.
We'll follow up with Randy.
What's gonna happen with what's in there now? I mean, are we gonna keep it or are we gonna...
For now, because it's, the spring's flowing, so for now...
It's just green.
Well, yeah, but it's not. Well, the, I mean, and that's a discussion we can have. The problem is if we drain, if we drain it now and just let the, the spring flow, we may not get enough, not get enough back. Whereas right now, if it's flowing, it's a little green. We've all swam, swam it green. I, you know, it hasn't even been a week yet.
What's the standard amount of time? I thought it was two weeks. Every two weeks they drain it clean.
In the winter, every two weeks, in the summer, usually it's every week.
Every week.
When the water's flowing.
Is there a plan?
Thursday.
We're working on it.
Good.
We're, we're just waiting for rain now.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, everybody's talking about flow, but what is the flow? Because the flow can be all sorts of different flows. So those of you who are talking about the spring is flowing, what exactly, how much is it flowing?
I don't have an answer for that either, but do you have any historical data that you'd like to add for the amount of flow that it's had in the past when we filled it up?
I don't have it right now, but who does have it is Will Connelly. And we also, it's measured right down back behind...
Well, the spillway.
Yeah, it's, it's measured, and it has not been flowing enough to keep the creek safe to walk in and stuff like that for at least the last four or five months. So I'm just wondering, all of a sudden, have, do we have enough, well, here.
Do you, do you have any evidence to say that, where are you coming up with a creek's not safe to walk in? Do you have any evidence of that?
Now, the only thing I was gonna say was, I, I recall from one of the prior meetings, I think it was around five cubic feet, oh, no. Five, what is it? Five cubic feet per second is what, was some number that was mentioned within the board meeting about the flow that we needed to keep the pool full. And if it falls below that, or it's like that one or two cubic feet per second, which is like millions of gallons a day, it's still, it wouldn't be enough to fill the pool. So, but those numbers, the court should have those numbers because the studies were good.
Well, and I'm unclear on the question about the flow. If it's, if it's, if the spring is high enough to flow into the pool, I mean, we're not gonna stop it unless it, unless it's, you know, too low that it doesn't, and then we're not gonna fill the pool. Because it all ends up down the other end into the creek anyway, so... Yes, ma'am?
I don't have an answer to that question, but I do know that Jason Long was monitoring the data, and the last that he posted a few days ago, was that the rate was 1.2 million gallons per day of flow rate. So that's the only other one that I got.
Yes, ma'am?
If you look on USC, USCGS, I think that's United States. So if you could send yours for a second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you guys decided whether or not you're gonna have lifeguards at the pool this summer and whether or not you'll do changes to the fee schedule?
As far as I know, we are not doing lifeguards. We have attendance, but that's a discussion, the fee schedule, and we were just, I was just talking to John about that, is that probably we should put it on the next agenda to do, to verify our fee scheduling, to decide if we have attendance, no attendance, all of that. Okay, is there any, anything else about that? Let's move on to item number two, discussion item number two, member concerns. There was a little confusion on that because it was members that had concerns about Board of Ethics and were asking for it to be put on the agenda. So I probably should have said Board of Ethics, but we are gonna discuss Unit 1. But, but Chris, did you wanna read them or...
I had originally asked for the Code of Ethics to be on the agenda for last board meeting, and we decided not to do it. So I asked for it this time, and then I had two members step forward and say they said, say that they would like to see it on the agenda. Sandy Herman stepped up and offered to lead the discussion. I mean, sorry, Sandy Hagan stepped, sorry, Sandy. Stepped up and offered to lead the discussion so that would allow all board members to be engaged instead of one trying to lead it and the others following. So I've asked Sandy to go ahead, and that's fine.
Okay.
But you don't want to...
Sure, you don't want first?
Do you think you're thirty, go ahead? We can not, everybody cares about you. What, everybody's worried, huh?
Could I make a suggestion that when people get up to speak, they, they say their names? Because we don't all know everybody. And I, I would like to hear who's talking.
Yes, ma'am.
That's just a thought.
Yeah, I think it's imperative since we're recording that we, everyone has their say, they're recording.
Okay, this is not meant in any way to be confrontational. It is simply to inform the members and remind the Board of Directors about the Code of Ethics and actions that go along with that. I've heard through the grapevine that I was reported to have said that we got rid of one board, we can get rid of another, and that is not what I said at all. And I wanted to make sure everybody knew that because there is no way in hell that any of us wanna go through that again. The other issue that goes along with the Code of Ethics is the conflict of interest. And for those who don't know me, I'm Sandy Hagan from Unit 27. I'm just a member now, but I am a past director, was on the board on and off for six terms, sorry, six years. So a lot of this that I'm going to be speaking about today is from my experience on the various different boards. Actually, it's the members' responsibility to hold the board responsible for what happens. We have to hold their feet to the fire sometimes to make sure that we are kept informed and so forth. What brought this to a head was the sudden resignation of Travis Huey and Alan Peterson, and it alarmed some of us that this should happen one right after another, and we were concerned that there were some issues from that. Part of this is an experience suffered in the 2019 board where a couple of directors decided that it was appropriate to go on to a non-sanctioned website and make comments about other board members and employees at, in the association. So Constance Kilgore and I requested that the Code of Ethics be an agenda item to remind all of us about what all of our duties are. First of all, I wanna read something, and it's called "Your Fiduciary Responsibilities" put out by HOAleader.com, which is just one of the websites that deal with HOAs. "No matter what your position, every board member and officer, officer has a fiduciary duty to act in the best interest of the association as a whole. You must exercise sound business judgment, respect the confidentiality of board deliberations and decisions, and avoid real and perceived conflicts of interest. In short, you must execute your responsibilities in good faith, with good judgment, without conflict, and by always putting the association's interests above your own." Which means that our directors, when they take that oath, their responsibility, and I won't say loyalty is a bad choice of word, is to the association and not to each individual member. Because if our association is strong, then that will benefit the entire membership without favoritism playing a part of it. This is also addressed in the Code of Ethics as well, 16J and K, which I'm going to actually read to you in a few moments. Or now. I could use the one that you guys got, but then I didn't, it's not pink. Okay, "Code of Ethics. Members of the board shall hold themselves to the following standards of ethical conduct: Listen carefully to board colleagues; respect the opinion of fellow board members; respect and support majority decisions of the board; recognize that all authority is vested in the full board only when it meets in legal sessions; stay well-informed about developments relevant to issues that may come before the board; participate in board meetings and actions; bring to the attention of the board any issues believed to have potential adverse effect on the association or the membership the board serves; refer member complaints to the executive officer, which is the general manager; recognize a director's duty is to ensure that the association is well-managed, not to manage the association; represent all the membership that the association serves, not just a special interest group; consider themselves, and this is in quotes, trustees of the association, and always operate in the best interests of the association; work to learn how to better perform the responsibilities of a director; declare conflicts of interest between their personal life and their position on the board, and abstain from voting or discussion when appropriate; board members shall not show disrespect for fellow directors or their opinions in or out of the boardroom; use the association for personal advantage or that of friends or relatives; discuss the confidential proceedings of the board outside the boardroom; directors shall not discuss how they will vote on the agenda prior to the meeting; interfere with the duties of the executive officer or undermine the executive officer's authority with staff members; conflict of interest policy, disclosure of potential conflict of interest and/or duality; any possible conflict of interest on the part of any director must be disclosed to other directors and made a matter of record, either through an annual procedure or when the interest becomes a matter of board action. Any board member having a possible conflict of interest on any matter should not vote or use his or her personal influence on the matter. Beforegoing requirements shall not be construed as preventing the director from briefly stating his or her position in the matter nor from answering pertinent questions from other directors, since his or her knowledge may be of assistance." Thank you for the patience for those who are reading along. Okay, and I'm gonna give a couple of examples of some of the violations that we've seen in the past. I hope that will not be re, I hope that will not be repeated by the current board. The comment about ensure well managed and not manage is not to also interfere with the manager, because in the past, we have had directors texting employees, giving them instructions on what to do, what not to do, going around the general manager, the executive officer, and that violates our statute. Representing all the membership, not special interest groups. Some examples would be directors who own property or have friends who own property and try to influence like the architectural committee on what they should be doing, or vote to favor one, a friend or a relative during the board meeting. The architectural committee and debt collection are two very important parts. Architectural committee, directors must really separate themselves from that because that's where they can get into some trouble. And in the past, we had had directors instructing the architectural committee on how to rule on any particular request. And we've also had directors in the past interfere with debt collection, which obviously debt collection feeds us money, and we need them to do it right. As far as conflict of interest, that can run the gamut. For instance, just a good pick on you, you own property. Should an issue come up that affects John's property use, John would have to recuse himself, and I know he knows that, recuse himself from it. These are things that have happened in the past, and this is kind of our members wanting to remind the board that you have a responsibility to the association, not to our individual membership out there. There's only one issue that has come up, and I've heard from several members about this, and unfortunately, it's a result of a statement made at the last board meeting wherein a director responded that at no time during his lifetime or while he was on the board would he ever vote for any increase in assessments. And unfortunately, and I'm not picking on you, but that was a breach of your fiduciary responsibilities to say that. And I'm thinking, probably thought about it after it happened, because we all say things upfront that we don't necessarily wanted to say, but it's now a matter of public record. Also, it says specifically in the code that we shall not discuss how they'll vote on any issue before it actually comes to the table on the agenda. By saying that, unfortunately, employees are, become worried because they're, I'm never gonna get my raise because we're never gonna have enough money to pay me. Assessments that don't keep up with the cost of living, we can't pay bills, we can't pay payroll, we can't pay insurance, we can't pay maintenance and office supplies, we can't pay wages which close the pool. So what we would be nice is for all of our directors and our members to realize that these people have a big responsibility to keep our association afloat. And that may take an increase or it may not, but I think we all need to be very careful about what we say at the table so as not to mislead our members. Because that statement does, is supported by a lot of people who will think that we should never again raise an assessment. I'm not sure what we're supposed to do. But it does not represent those people who feel we should pay our bills. So these are just items that have come up, and we thought that this would be better to just air this than have rumors and anything else going on. And I don't mean to pick on you, Mammo.
No, no, I can't.
I don't mean to pick on you or any of you, which is why I try to use examples from the past, so...
Can I add some context to that regarding me?
Sure.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, whoever was here, and they can listen to the videotape from last time. What I stated in the context was, we're trying to get, we had a discussion about hiring the Realtor to sell lots. And I stated that it is my goal to sell every lot so we can increase the memberships. We have 50 pending lots that need to be sold. That being stated, if we hired, if we got the Realtor, which we did, it was voted on this past couple of weeks ago or a week and a half ago, we now have someone who's gonna try to increase the membership. And in that context, I said, I want it done so that we won't have to raise fees this coming year. I only have one year left anyway, so whether I run or don't run, this is my last hurrah if, if I even decide to vote that way. But I can, I think I can state freely that at this point, at this moment in time, I have no desire to raise increases as of this date, membership fees.
And the only reason it was brought up is other members said that that really concerned them to make a statement, as finite as that was. So that, there's always the chance that there's misunderstandings. Constance, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Well...
Come, come. Don't let me be, don't let me be dad cop all day.
I, Constance Kilgore, you know, we really operate with a lot of rumors around here instead of facts, and so I don't know, when I hear things, what is true or not true a lot of times. So I'm gonna put two of them out there, and again, I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, I heard this, which I did. And, but I think it needs to be clarified, I know Linda, you're involved with Staples, so, you know, do you have to recuse yourself from votes if somebody comes up about the stable? John, I know that you have properties here that you financially benefit from your properties. Is there a time when you wouldn't be able to vote? Lisa, I hear that, you know, and I...
All hearsay.
You know, that...
All hearsay.
Better to air it. It's, it's better to air it because that's what people in this group...
No, please air it, but it is hearsay. Make it clear. It is hearsay.
I think I already made that clear. That you have, that you do business with a golf course in terms of golf carts, I don't know what that is, but that that happens. And of course, you have a son who is working at Dickman Hall. I don't know that that has, should have anything to do, because we all have to be employed, or certainly some of us do. So I'm... So I'm just saying that, please be as upfront as you can about the different kind of issues, even if it's hearsay. Does it, does it, it just needs to be addressed, whether it's correct or not when it comes to board members. And I think we have an obligation, that when we hear things, to let the board know that we have heard these things and, and can get to the truth about it. That's it? All I have to say?
Okay. Okay, so the whole purpose of this was to remind members, that maybe this is an item that they should read occasionally, and certainly remind the directors to be very careful in what you say at this table, because as soon as you say it, it becomes public record. And that can affect how members respond. Could be anything from gossip, which we all hate, and this is a hotbed of gossip around here, it's a small community, that's what happens when everybody knows everybody. But it's just really important that we as members hold your feet to the fire and make sure that you follow the rules that have been laid out for you, and that we as members follow the rules that have been laid out for us. And our responsibility is to make sure that if we spot something that doesn't sound quite right, that we let the board know about it. That way, they can make any corrections at the board table that need to be made, to get rid of the rumors and whatever, the gossip. Does anybody have a question?
Well, I do. Don't you think it would be appropriate to?
Who are you?
Alicia Christian. Don't you think it would be appropriate to have a discussion with somebody if you've heard something third-hand, and you don't know if they said it or not, before bringing it in front of everybody?
That's a crazy idea.
And making a whole meeting about something that's maybe taken out of context? Come on!
This whole meeting wasn't just about that. But you're absolutely right, which is why I mentioned at the beginning that, no, I never said that. No one wants those kinds of things following them around. But the Code of Ethics is a very important part of our bylaws, and it's there for a reason. And that's why I gave examples from past boards that I've been on where these things actually came up and had to be addressed. So I'm thinking that this board is going to be 100% clean when it comes to the Code of Ethics and conflict of interest, and we'll go our merry way, and we'll all continue to love this place for a living. Any other questions?
Yes, my name's Kendra. So if y'all are coming up reading the Code of Ethics in front of this board, the next time new members are going to be voted in, or we can have this exact same forum again, and anybody that opposed anyone that was voted in, get there, they're hearsay.
This form, this form that you received, if you will notice on the bottom, there's a signature block, and each, each director, when they're vice on the board, is required to sign the Code of Ethics. We started that in 2020 to make sure that what happened in the years 2018, 2019 did not happen again. So this is the same document that the board is required to sign when they are elected to the board, so just to let them know that they are made aware of that. But this is something that comes in your packets, and I almost guarantee most members don't read what's in those packets. So this is just to kind of help things along and open that. Again, we don't mean to be confrontational in any way, just trying to point out all the rules that we have to follow.
Ms. Sandy, I just have one question, since we have a captive audience here today. It never occurred to you to mention anything about the ethics in February of this past year, while we had another board member and a general manager here? You had no issues with ethics in February or January of this past year?
We've had questions with ethics with every.
Not to bring it here publicly, I'm saying.
Not to bring it here publicly, no. And part of the reason is, is that more members have questioned these types of things more recently, and so we just figured this would be a good time to bring it up.
Well, I'm Alicia Christian again, and those members need to talk to people that they, okay, I heard you say this.
That's right.
And then, so what did you mean by that? And it could be that, oh, you didn't hear the first part of that, or for whatever reason, so I just, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. That's what I meant by, we never stop to hold board's feet to the fire. I mean, we need to question those things we've heard, and we need things that appear to be.
But they don't have to be done.
No, this is, but this is the first time we've really ever discussed this. And we ask that because several members have contacted both Constance and I about concerns that they had, and we were willing to actually do the research and present. And we want to thank the board for allowing us to do so. It's greatly appreciated, and I hope it was helpful.
Well, I was, Kendra, would like to answer your question. Yes, I'm sure there were a lot of members here, myself included, who would have loved to have the Code of Ethics read to some of the previous people that appeared recently and are now over up here. And I think we would have.
Susan, did you, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I did. And I guess the one thing I would say is that there's been, there's been two, two, there's been two, this is Suzanne Main, I'm Suzanne Main. So there's been two board meetings I've been to, I think this calendar year, where I sat in the audience and I was like, I cannot believe I am hearing this, because it was, there was a, there was a board meeting, or maybe it was an annual meeting, it was about the pump, we had some pump we, that was going out, and we were trying to get a new pump, and the general manager, Alan Peterson, was, you know, he had his process he was following, and then it turns out, we had two board members, Mimo and John, I believe, I'm not sure who it was, it was Lisa. Two board members who talked about they'd gone out to get their own bids for pump parts, and I'm like, and I'm just sitting there thinking, okay, did I miss something? Because that's not their responsibility, that's not your responsibility. And so why is it, I think it's a good time to read the Code of Ethics and the conflict of interests, because clearly, we all sat in that meeting, and even those of us who thought, I don't really think this is what's supposed to happen, we didn't speak up. You know, we didn't speak up at that point. And I realize that it's pretty frustrating to be a board member and, you know, and to feel like you're here to do things and to make things happen, and then you get frustrated when things don't happen the way you think you could help them happen. But I just think that it's a good time to read the Code of Ethics, because I, I mean, I, we all sat there, and if you didn't, you can go back and see it, if we were able to capture the, on the, on the video, we were able to see that. And so I think we all need to take a pause, and we need to say, okay, we've all been called to account, because I should have stood up and said something, because I was like, I don't think this is right, but I didn't do anything about that. And so it's a good time to take a pause and just say, okay, we've all heard it, hopefully, you know, people are watching, or if they're going to go back and watch, and they can, they can say, okay, we had it read to us, we all heard it, and so let's take a step forward and go forward. Because it's not that people are bad people, because we really have a great place to live, and we all want to be here, and we want it to work. And I can understand board members getting frustrated, I can understand staff or general managers being frustrated. But now we've had all the chance to hear the Code of Ethics, and conflict of interest read to us, and I just think we need to take it to heart and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big eye? Okay. My name's David Mann. Okay, so did y'all already have a copy of the Code of Ethics all along?
Everybody has.
Is it in some public place where everybody here on the fort can read it anytime?
Yes.
Is it online, or are we messing with it now?
Well, I think there's people either present or not present that had stuff to say that aren't saying it.
They should have, they should have done homework, okay? That's the way I see it. As far as y'all looking for a better price on a pump, I see no problem with that. Now, if y'all ordered the pump and went over Peterson's head, yeah, that's, I see an issue with that. But if you're saying, gosh, we need that, let me go online, look, Mr. Peterson, I found this one over here in Calumnesouz, Michigan, for $1,000 less, give him the information, and then he can do his job. But he was sitting back, because he thought that Mugg should pay for it, and Mugg thought, well, he should pay for it, meanwhile, the golf course is going dry. So action had to be taken, but that's the way I see it. Yeah, if you jumped out there and went out and bought it, unless it was with your own money, and you say, here, it's a gift, then that would be wrong. But if you were to help the man out, I see no issue with that. That's all I got.
Hi, everyone. If you don't know me, my name is Brittany Wiley, and I am married to a board member up here, but I am my own person, and I am a member. So I did have a clarifying question. Sandy, when you were up here, one of the first things, if I didn't misunderstand, you said that regarding Travis Hury resigning and also Mr. Peterson resigning was bringing up some of the discussion and reasons for having this, however, you didn't cite any specific examples. And I think that if we're going to have this discussion, then let's just talk about it. Let's maybe not lean so passively on past boards and have the discussion about what we're concerned about right now, so that we can address it and we can all move forward as a community. So I think that's important.
I'd like to say a couple of things, because obviously, Sandy pointed out conflict of interest, and I don't have any social media, however, I do get screenshots of social media, and I believe Miss Hader is sitting in the back back there and made a post about me having a conflict of interest because I have short-term rentals on the fort, and that I wanted them filled, I wanted the pool filled, so that I could make money. So I just wanted to be clear, because I think maybe Sandy heard that as well, maybe other board members have heard that, and I'll get to my point. But I want to state, I made a little prepared statement here, that all of our properties are rented long-term with the exception of one house. This particular property was booked on March 12th, 2023, 75 days in advance of us making a decision to fill the pool. Additionally, the guest stated that their family comes up every Memorial Day, and this guest did not inquire about the status of the pool, nor did they inquire about the canceling, or inquire about canceling due to the pool not being open. So I'm just going to use that as one example of how somebody posting on social media platforms tried to drag my name through the mud with absolutely no proof. And they're more than welcome to put a public apology out there if they would like, because I have all the proof right here, and I'm more than happy to give that to anybody that would like to see it. This, doing that with no evidence doesn't do anything but make everybody in this community mad for absolutely no reason. And I would also say that we are a small community. Everybody knows that, what, you rent golf carts, you work on golf carts, I don't know what you, okay, rent golf, guys, I mean, everybody here has a skill set, everybody's trying to make a little bit extra money on the side, I mean, somebody's trying to sell cakes out of their house, I mean, somebody's trying to do certain, I mean, this entire community, my entire life, has worked together to help each other and to try to support those small businesses, not drag them through the dirt when they're on a board and they got to make a decision about something. So I would just say that, that those rumors about myself, and more particularly about my wife, are extremely hurtful and have no basis, and that we all need to think about these rumors before we start spreading them around. I just heard a rumor a minute ago that Max Wilson is my best friend, and I want to hire him to be superintendent of Fort Clark. Now, how should that make me feel? I met the gentleman a week and a half ago for the very first time in my life. So does the board deserve that? Does the community deserve that? Does anybody want that happening to them? Because I think everybody on this board wants to work hard for this community, and I already know and have seen the proof of how hard this community wants to work for this fort. And that's more important than the work that this board does, because the volunteers of this community are the glue that binds us together. And all the hard work and the times that we all share together are way more important than all the nasty rumors that people are spreading around. So with that, thank you, and we all just want to move forward.
Well, I'm Alicia Christian, and I just want to say, the bullying just really got bad. I mean, Annabelle was good for, she had so much potential for this, Travis as well, everybody, and the bullying is about to stop. And there should be people that do that, and continue on with that kind of behavior through social media should be expunged from social media. I'll call my cousin Guido, but we'll talk about that later.
Hold that first. It's your board. For the back person.
So I'm Gordon, I'm in unit 23, and I want to say, Director Wiley, I really appreciate you saying that, because one of the first meetings that I attended when I first moved here, we had a discussion about some rumors that were going around, and Annabelle, who knew, was extremely upset, and got up and spoke about how she wasn't doing anything wrong, and she did, she tried to do the same thing we did just now, explained herself and what was going on, and what the circumstances were, and went as far as to remove herself, and you stood up and said, hey, we're in a small community, and that happens, you got to get used to it, toughen up. And it doesn't sound like you're, you're following that same philosophy, you see, very hurt, and I want to acknowledge that. That's the way she was feeling, that's the way Travis was feeling, that's the way Mr. Peterson was feeling, every time a member bad-mouthed you, would bad-mouth his employees. Those are the things, we don't always feel it when it's not happening to us, and we think, oh, God, toughen up, get over it, sit down, nobody wants to hear what's, but it's important for people to say it, and now it sounds like you're feeling it, and you are sounding the same way she was sounding. It's hurtful, it's, it's not helping anything, and all it does is drive away people who are trying to, who are trying to participate in the community. And all that happens is when they come out and try to help, a whole ward of residents come out and complain and spread rumors and gossip and everything else, until those people just go home, because they don't have to participate, they can just live here and be peaceful on their own without getting into all of this jungle. And I can completely understand why they would do that. So I would like for everybody to keep in mind that even though it might not be happening to you at the moment, it might happen to you sometime soon, and your feelings might change. So let's be respectful of everybody, regardless of what their opinions are, if their opinions might not match with ours. We still should be respectful, because things can flip-flop, and you can be the one feeling it in the hot seat instead of someone else.
I think that's right. Thank you very much. And, yeah, thank you very much for saying that. And I would say that, I guess I'd like, I would say that I agree with you about 50%. And what I mean by that is that some of that's maybe taken out of context. If you grew up in Brackville, you know that there is a rumor mill. However, I'm no longer sitting in the crowd, I'm on the board, and I have to follow a certain Code of Ethics. And I take rules pretty serious. And so when somebody says that I'm, I have a conflict of interest or that I'm violating a certain Code of Ethics, that's a lot different than me sitting in the crowd. And if I remember my statement correctly, and I'd have to go back and listen to it, but I made a comment that it was not okay for the rumors to be spread about Annabelle and that for her to get beat up, but that it does come with the territory. That's what I said. I did not say that I was okay with her getting attacked. Matter of fact, my wife is here, if she would share with you personal comments that I said, that I absolutely thought it was horrible, and that nobody should be treated in the manner that she has. So I will agree with you about 50%, maybe I shouldn't have put it that specific way, but, but I did not support it at the time, and I did not support it now.
Yeah, if you want to talk about who has the most of the game, short-term rentals for the pool, that'd be Fort Clark Hotel.
I think it's unfortunate that we're here like this.
I think it's unfortunate that we're here like this. And I think somebody said it before, if there's, if you hear something, or if you, you know, come to the person, I mean, all of us up here are available. If you hear something about me, come talk to me. I mean, I, I, I'm saddened that we're here. And since this has been thrown out here, I have two really old golf carts that I rent very cheaply, and I have rented them for three or four years now. And I don't have a deal with the golf course. In fact, they have come to me when they don't, when they've rented out all their golf carts and there's a tournament, and they don't have enough golf carts for the rest of the players, and asked me if I would. That is the extent of a relationship, and I think I've done it one time. So, you know, and that could have been dispelled easily. And I, and I explained this to the board previously. So, you know, I, I'm sorry?
You fulfilled your obligation.
Yes, and there was another, was there another?
I'll buy one.
You'll feel what?
I'll buy a golf cart.
I rent them, I won't sell them. I don't know if they were selling. As far as the pumps, I'd like to clarify that Mr. Peterson refused to pay for the pump. I have an email, if anybody'd like to see it. He said it was Mudd's responsibility, but our responsibility as a board is to ensure a well-managed fort and to ensure that, that the golf course stays running. So we approached Randy, and, and he, he was, to find out, you know, exactly what we could do. And he's the one that went and found different pumps and said that as long as the board approved it, they would turn the water back on and they would help install the pump. So we could have sat on our hands and waited to see, or we could fulfill our fiduciary obligation and take care of the golf course.
Okay, I'd like to comment on that, and I understand completely. From my experience, I think the manner in which it was done probably caused some misunderstandings because, and I've talked about perception before, is that you took it, you took it upon yourself. And I think in the future, should any of the directors feel that it would be wise to become involved in that kind of thing? Because the best thing to do is to bring it up at a meeting and decide that we want to be involved in this, and actually have a vote from the membership, that we're going to assign a couple of board members to get involved with this to help out our general manager. And then that clears the air for everyone. They don't think that, I don't think you had any evil intent at all. I think you were trying to help. I think that maybe it would have been less suspicious as far as members, if it had been handled in an open meeting, and that you decided that you two would be best to work with Alan at that time, to get a better deal on the pump. And I think maybe it's because people just thought you were insinuating yourself, and that something may be not affecting what happened. But again, that's the transparency that's required of the board to handle things in front of the membership. The only, and the only second thing is, it's not against our rules and regs specifically to have a business in your home. If you're a board member, you have to divulge it. But as long as you do not have a sign promoting, I'm going to pick on trend, golf clubs here. Now, if you have parking spots out there where you park out your neighborhood and make your neighbors unhappy, you can work on your own, you can prepare, you can make cakes, you can sell golf carts. The main is it's kept to a point of not offending your neighbors. I want you to, just to clarify, it's not against the rules to handle this at all, it's the way you have that, it's the way that we do it.
Well, to go back to what we were discussing, and I, I would like to clarify the fact that I have all of the email threads with all of the board members at the time discussing the urgency. We couldn't, there was no waiting for another board meeting to have the open discussion because of the, the fact that there was no water going to the golf course. And the board, all of the board knew, and, and, I don't even know how to say this without, nobody was doing anything. It was just sitting there, and either not being responded to or ignored. So you can characterize it as, we should have done it different, but at that point, we had a responsibility and time.
Hold on a second. Let me add another thing to, from Miss Sandy. I interjected myself, because Mr. Peterson, what I'm understanding from, now, this is from what Randy told us, he said, we're not going to pay for the pump. At that moment, he turned it off. He turned it off.
That's Randy.
That's true. Well, he turned it off. Now, Randy also explained, had Mr. Peterson, again, I'm, I'm paraphrasing what Randy said. Had Mr. Peterson said, look, let me work with the board, let me talk to the board, let's see what we can do, something, that spigot would have stayed on. But he turned it off, so the golf course went out without water for three weeks. And so there's, there's a lot, and I didn't get bids. I didn't get bids. Everything that I did regarding Mudd, and she talked about it in the thread, everything was emailed to every board member here, every single one, everybody was kept abreast of what was happening. No hidden agenda, I don't even golf. So why do I care if we got a rate, we got water or not? So that's most of the story.
Can you just now explain, it would have been nice to hear, that's all.
We could have asked.
We could get some hands now.
Yeah, okay. I don't remember, I think in the back.
Robert Ritchie, quick question. We're new here, and we got here on September 1st last year. What was the result? I would just like to know, because we got here, it was the third golf course. What was the result of three weeks without water for the golf course? I really, really like to know what happened. You know, what, what was the result of the golf course not having water?
Well, we could have started advertising the worst golf course in Texas. If that answers your question.
Mr. Trip, I would like to say thank y'all for taking the initiative to obtain parts, or not obtain the parts, but to find out codes of where they could secure the parts from and to keep the prices low as possible.
Okay, I'm Chuck Fields, and you probably know that I have a big mouth. But, but, but Mr. Peterson expressed a concern to me that after this board was seated, that no one had talked to him, no one had approached him, had come to his office to express concerns or ask questions or whatever. Though, to paraphrase a line from a very famous movie, I think what we have here is a failure to communicate.
Couldn't agree more.
And it's, and, no, it's changed. Is there, is there anyone else? Does anybody else want to clarify anything?
Ms. Chris, you don't want to add anything to the ethics?
Just read them. I would recommend that we go over them every month for a little while, just, just a real quick review, because our members are not aware that they're in the bylaws. They, they just don't know, and now they do. But not all the members are here. So if we review it every month for the next six months, everyone would be able to read it, understand it, and hold us accountable.
Why don't you put it out in Discord, since all the members aren't here, but they should be getting that.
Discord.
I would also, I would also recommend to everybody a couple of things. The code of ethics are obviously monumental and monumentally important, okay? But there's a couple of other things that we don't need to forget, because if you read the code of ethics, you can lose context greatly in how this fort runs, okay? We will be hiring a new general manager in the future, and now that, you know, that's going to be a challenge to find somebody that, that will take care of this fort the way we want it taken care of. And we, we hold that obligation very dear. However, I would, I would ask everybody to go read powers, okay, the powers of the board, because the powers of the board mirror the duties that we grant to the executive officer. So I know there's been a lot of hustle and bustle about the executive officer and his duties, and, and obviously, the rumors spread around, or the lack of context or perspective spread around about how we don't, how Melon Lisa handled the water pump situation, that was a metering device. But I'll read the duties of the executive officer quickly, and you can read the powers and have that somewhat framed for you. The executive officer shall have the authority as granted by the board of directors in the management and conduct of the normal day-to-day business and affairs of the association, except for the following, which will be the board of directors' approval, you can read that, it's just money stuff, changing bylaws, whatnot. Okay. Would anybody in this room consider the pool being dry as normal? So it is 100% okay for that pool to be in the board agenda and for us to make the decision to fill it. It is not normal day-to-day operations. And furthermore, the board, per Mr. Peterson's contract, states that we can give responsibilities to him and take them away when we choose. So if there's some changing, say he's failing at marketing, failing at it, but honestly, there wasn't, there hasn't been any marketing since he got here, I'm not picking only 10%, it hasn't, it hasn't been here, okay?
Before, either.
Well, maybe before, yeah. So if he's failing at that, and as a board we decide that, we can take that responsibility and give it to somebody else. That's clearly written in the bylaws. So we can't choose to look at one portion of the bylaws and go, oh, my God, this is, this is, this is it, and then not go back and look at the rest of the bylaws and get context into how this all applies across the entire spectrum of the entire 20 pages and the declarations and Property Code 209, okay? We have to look at it from a 30,000-foot view. So I would challenge everybody to go ahead and read all of the bylaws, all the declarations. It's, it's, honestly, it's fun. It's fun to go read it and try to figure out, like, how is this formed? What did our forefathers, we'll call them forefathers, right, 1971? What, what, what were they trying to accomplish? And then what, what has everybody tried to accomplish before that in the, in the Brown and Root days? Like, I mean, the stuff's amazing. So I would challenge everybody to read this, get your full context before you go out and, and just start shaking the code of ethics at somebody like that's the answer to everything. It's not. The board takes its powers, its duties, its ultimate duties that we vow an oath for, to this community, and we grant that to the executive officer and say, here, we want you to have this, and we hope that you chair it, you take care of it, but we're here watching. That's the way the system works. It's not complicated, and, but we all need to have that context. So I know we're talking about code of ethics, but I think if we just make it that black and white, it can get a little bit muddy. So, okay?
All members, you can go to the administrative offices and you can ask for the declarations and the bylaws. They should have a copy there. If they don't, then you need to remind them that they need copies. But you can pick up all those documents at the admin office, they're there, required by law, that they're posted and available to members at all times.
And they're also on the Fort Clark's website.
Yes. Sue Martin, Dean Cardier, I've been here for about 20 years, and I've seen boards come and go. We've had some good boards before you were installed as the board members, and we've had some real bad boards. I think the problem is, it doesn't matter what the bylaws say or what any of our rules and regulations say, if we don't have a board that's strong enough to keep us in line, we're just little kids that are trying to break the rules. I'm 70 years old, highly tired, life in prison is not a big deal. I think what I have is we, we are confused, at least a, a big part of us, and I, your dad's one of the problems. One day this applies, the next board comes in, it's all out. Then the next board has to sit there, and Wiley, we talked about this, they've got to start all over and try and redo it. Well, people get disgusted, everybody else, you know, and then they get rid of the board or the board goes, like, somebody hears that, oh, my feelings are hurt, I'm going to quit, I can't take it. You know, we need to have strong people in the position that we, that you have, and we, as members of the community, need to say, well, you know, you're probably right in breaking the rules. Instead of getting on social media and going, do you know the audacity of that board member to call me out for doing this? And that's what we are. We are little kids going, and it's, and I don't know, I don't know how to fix this, I don't know how to stop it, other than, somebody said, go read it. Oh, I'm not going to read this much shit on this. Why don't, why don't you lay it out for us and say, look, this is what, what we can and what we can't do, like, if you have a bitch about it, your dad's so sad. You elected us for two years, or three years, or whatever you put in. You know, and say, that's, yeah, that's the way it is. You know, you let, you bought into this community. It's not your fault that they didn't read the stuff. We've got way too much information, way too much.
Ms. Martin, thank you very, very much, and very, very much. So I, I think now would be a good time to maybe say, it's awesome that you're leading us into this, but we had a workshop, what, three weeks, four weeks ago? Four weeks ago, something like that, we had a workshop where we're creating, what we did create, a vision traction organizer. It's a system to create structure, discipline, and set one-year, three-year, and five-year goals, okay? We did this with Mr. Peterson, and this board unanimously with Mr. Peterson agreed on the goal set forth in this vision traction organizer. Now, y'all haven't seen that? We will release that, we're trying to release it right now, but it may take a week or two to get it out, where everybody has that. Now, just for one of the, just as a scenario, we've got on their Creekside, okay, that we would have some kind of eatery at Creekside, it may just be hot dogs, I don't know, but we're trying to do something to get more, you know, to get food at Creekside, that's a one-year goal, okay? So if we don't have something in a year, you can come back here and yell at us and say, I'm going to jail and taking y'all out because you didn't put the eater in, okay? But on this board back here, if you'll look, it says accountability, integrity, communication, and continuous improvement. That is the fundamental foundation of this board. That's what we agreed on as a board, and Mr. Peterson. So we, we acknowledge and have talked and discussed about, and I'm sure Sandy would have a light on this, Bill would have a light on this, that, that can shine light on it, that as, you're 100% correct, as boards change, stuff just gets lost. Structure gets lost, discipline gets lost. We would like to build something that gets passed down. And if the next board doesn't carry on the torch with that structure and that discipline, shame on them. And, and that's our goal, that's all of our goal. We agreed on that, Mr. Peterson agreed on that, and that is what we're trying to accomplish.
My name is Alvin Regan, I'm a CPA and an enrolled agent, certified pro-tenor.
And member of the year.
Yeah. Member of the year is the only one that did not come with a code of ethics. You can be comforted by this, you can be worried by this, but everybody here, when you read a code of ethics, it sounds nice, it's clean, it's crisp, and crisp, there are gray areas between those rules. For example, if you have an ethic that says that you're going to let the executive officer do his job, okay? You've got another ethic that says that you're going to manage, be sure the fort's managed properly. So I'm just going to pick on the example that's been used, the water pump. Which do you, do you choose to follow? Now, maybe it could have been, no doubt it could have been done differently, but I've been over 40 years dealing with codes of ethics, and I can guarantee you, there's going to be times when you're going to have to stop things. And I would say we as a member need to do this too, before we start jumping up and down about conflict of interest or any of these things, and ask ourselves, is this one of those gray areas? of those gray areas? Thank you.
And anyone else? Well?
Before we clear the room, I'd like to say, you know, we didn't, no, I guess, I guess nobody really knew what to expect this evening, but thank you, everybody, for coming and, and having a, a, we're, we're not gonna cut it off, but just thank you, everybody, for coming and having a calm discussion. Honestly, this is probably the calmest board meeting we, we, I've seen in two years. So, thank you very much for that.
Unit one. Yes, we have not forgotten unit one.
Hi, Bernie Wileykin. Um, I just wanted to share, I think a couple of people have touched on this, and that is, let's ask questions, right? And we've talked about too, like, how do we stop the rumors and, and that sort of thing? And let's just ask each other questions. When you hear something, ask about it, because we, I've said this before, um, we all have the same goal, and that's to make this place a better place. So we're all on the same team. We may not agree on how to get there, but we're all on the same team. And I think that right now, there's just a lot of looking at each other's enemies, and we're not. There's a great book called Conversational Capacity, and it's about being curious. And we're gonna have a good discussion, we have to be curious, we have to ask questions. Why do you feel that way? Why do you think that way? What's your perspective? Um, and then another book that I will quote is by, it's Renee Brown, and it's the story we tell ourselves. And so oftentimes, you know, we can make up a story and say, this is why I think this is going on this way, um, and we don't have that conversation with that person, and that's really not the case. So let's just ask questions, because I love this community, I've grown up here, I know that these people, to, to be on this board and take the beating, if you will, that they take, and, and every board member before them that's taken it, they love this community, and we're just good up there and volunteer and do that work. And of course, all the other volunteers that work hard every single day to make this place better. Thank you.
I just wanna say, I think y'all are doing an awesome job.
This is gonna be a piece of cake after we do this. So we're on to item number two.
And one of the things that our forefathers taught, what taught me was, when someone gossips, you ask them, is it the truth? Do you verify it? And what have I benefited from? And that solves it all. Anyway, I'd like to bring the audience up to date on what's happening, if y'all don't mind, just so quickly.
Read it, Dixie.
Well, I don't, I'm short. Anna Martines, unit one. And it's, I wanna bring y'all up to date because I want to share with you what we have been through. So I submitted an email to Mr. Peterson and the board, and I just took excerpts, I'm glad I didn't want to read the whole mail and make it short and sweet. And the email was on four and four, and we continue to have sanitation problems with our current garbage situation. Through the years, we have offered several, several solutions. This weekend, we had help from the Calverdive Brigade to get the area cleaned up. Unfortunately, by the next day, garbage was strewn about again. We would like to see a trailer moved to a location where the, where all residents would have access. We understand there are instances where an overabundance of trash is accumulated, but the residents of unit one do not want to be the recipients of that debris. The maintenance crew does not take time to pick up garbage scattered about. Raccoons come out at night and invite their friends for a free buffet provided by the trailer. When you drive up to the empty trash trailer, keep your windows up because flies will take it, take over the interior vehicle. I got no response from Mr. Peterson. I did get one of the board members calling to ask additional information, that was Mr. Rusman. So a month later, I sent up another email, five and three. I gave them the timeline that we have been through. Four, 28, 2018. We had a meeting, a workshop with Mr. Lawrence and board member Mr. Hope and the residents of unit one. In June, we had an outcome of the previous workshop. The end of June, we met Mr. Lawrence and the maintenance manager, and we're gonna discuss the situation. In August, we went through the walkthrough with the director and the maintenance manager. In December, we mailed complete correspondence to the board with our request. That was that board. Nothing happened. In 2019, we requested that TECQ come out and investigate our situation. In May, we were visited by the TECQ commission. In June, Mrs. Perkins, board president, sent a letter to CEQ, TCEQ, to comply with their standards. I sent them a copy of the letter, it said that they would meet with the residents of unit one and come to a, a solution, and that the trash trailer would be emptied twice a week. Nothing happened. And then I sent the letter to Mr. Peterson, that from 2019 to the present, we have verbally requested something to be done to correct our garbage nightmare from different members of our unit. We have been very patient, when we purchase our properties, we sign a contract with the fort. Our contract states that we purchase property with expectations of being worry-free regarding our garbage and green area maintenance responsibilities. The fort collects 79 maintenance crews from unit one. I don't think any other unit pays 79 maintenance crews. We bring over $4,000 a month for services we're not giving. We get a trash trailer where we car, our garbage do, or if you have a home facing the street, you can get real pickup with a garbage can, or you can drag your can across the green area, around the curb, and then cart it back when it's empty. So as a business professional in my past life, I was taught never to complain without providing a resolution. We provided resolutions, we provided several. Obviously, our solutions were not considered, or they were obstacles we were not aware of. If you will provide with, provide us with the objections to our suggestions, perhaps we can work together and come up with suitable solution. Our suggestions were, move the trash trailer to a centralized location where we and unit one and others can have access. And that would be others, because we've seen many people from the fort take their garbage over there, and I understand why, several of them are weekend rentals and need to get rid of the garbage before they leave town. And that's okay, we had it in centralized location. This would alleviate the traffic to the unit from outside entities coming to dispose of their garbage, designate a location where all non-husual items could be disposed of. We suggested the maintenance yard where it could be monitored with video cameras, see who's trashing the area. Put a no dumping sign and aggressively find the culprits. The second one, have all residents get garbage cans, and maintenance could use their wheel to collect garbage for the homes not facing the street. This would give us the same type of service that membership does. We have a neighborhood association. We organized it through asset-based community development, the whole process. We went through it with Mr. Lawrence and the other board members. I'm actually a trade of razzied. And, um, so since we organized our neighborhood associations, we work on the premise that the membership are the greatest asset this board has. I think you said that. Since our organization, we have improved our unit considerably, and our neighborhood looks good because we have neighbors that work to make it better. You will see us cutting grass in the green area, picking up garbage, reminding each other if we see, if we see CCR violations, and basically looking out for each other. We want to continue the process to improve our neighborhood and make it more clean and dirt-logged and forth. So now it's in your hands. I don't know why, if there's any reason why the trailer couldn't be moved into the maintenance area, or something that y'all, we hope to get a resolution from you. We're putting it in your hands.
Would they have access to, to the maintenance area 24/7?
Well, what it is, well, but see, I got, I drew a map to make it clear for you. And we'll pass it on.
May I say something? I'm Alicia Trish Dittson. For those of y'all that don't know, in Unit of Blood, back by the carport area, there is a dumpster trailer. And people throw their garbage in there, and I can't tell you how many times we go there, and Al, is Al still there?
Right there.
There you are. Al goes out and cleans it up every day. But there's people that dump white goods, uh, cans of paint, um, just, you know, whatever. And it's, and on top of the trailer as well, and, and the, there's feral cats out there, which we're not talking about next. And raccoons, exactly, and it's just a pretty mess. Oh, but, but, you know, and the thing is, so I, I wanted to be sure that, Anna, thank you so much for all of this, because it's so important to us, but I'm not sure that everybody else understands. Who knows exactly what that trailer is? And it's huge, and it's nasty, it's boring. And you do get flies in your car if you just stop to throw your trash out, everywhere. I think we did her up here, it's convenient. So I'll leave it in there.
Anna, do you have any suggestions?
Well, other than, see, I was telling her that there's, right where the trailer is parked now, there's a little road that goes into the maintenance area. If you could just pull it up a little bit, into the maintenance area. That would be, like, how many did you think it is, Al?
Well, I, I wanna be clear. You were, you were saying maintenance area, are you, are you talking about the motor pool?
No, no, no.
The one right behind, right where we talked about.
So.
Maintenance yard?
So it is an area to the west of where the trailer is mounted?
Yes.
Um, maybe, wish I played football now. Maybe, maybe 20 yards between where it is now, the end of it, where you could turn it, you have to, it's clearing, but you can turn it sideways. You know, instead of it being in the middle of the car park, it'd be down to the west end.
It would be close to the maintenance.
Or put it in the maintenance yard. And that way, the offenders.
Or, and the whole, the whole.
But we could lock our stuff back there if we wanted to, but all the people that come, and there are truckloads that come.
And the little notch.
Exactly. License plates, please, but not just identification, but, but those guys would have to go in the gate when maintenance is open.
I would think it would probably be better in, in the open area, the maintenance area, so that workers can, really, it's supposed to be for unit one, but if, if someone from Fort Clark, if I wanna go throw something there, that would give me or any, any, any member the opportunity to put it in the trailer. I, I for one, and this was brought up a month ago, and in spirit of communication, Mr. Peterson flat-out said, I wasn't gonna move that trailer. So that's where we were last month, but this is a different month. I for, right now, we have a motion to, to move that trailer, I have absolutely no, no qualms with moving that trailer tomorrow.
Anna, would it be, would it be better, I just, I drove down there yesterday, and just to look at it, so that I could kinda educate myself, I, I don't know all the solutions, but, but it occurred to me, if we got some regular-sized dumpsters and put them at the very, like, when you drive in unit one and you take the left and go around over there, right there, right in front of unit one, where they just have the flip-up lids?
Right. Well, we tried, we researched that, and it's very expensive, the fort wouldn't pay.
Well, how is it gonna be, Anna Martines, no relation to Anna, discussing with the trash pick up there, but I live there. Those dumpsters, how would they be hauled out?
Well, I think, I asked Lisa that, or Melon, earlier.
Or improve dumpsters.
This, at the apartments, they, they have it, I, I thought maybe the trash truck, or the condos, they have those, and that the trash truck might be able to pick them up. And I was just thinking, you put it.
The condos, they have little dated things where they put garbage cans.
We asked before about, we asked about the dumpsters before, and they told us they're too expensive, because they have to get, well, well, if you get them out of Uvalde or Del Rio, you have to consider.
Like the SGRD ones, that, that time you pick them up and haul them away?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I believe Matt has some empathy to my being.
I just lied. We got a reach.
I like my name is Stalin, from Red and Green.
We can't hear you. And if it needs to be closed for security reasons, maintenance, or that's fine, we can tell, like, the residents, you can always tell from this.
For security reasons.
I'd make a strong recommendation to the board, before y'all make a decision, you have a manager, a maintenance manager, which y'all need to consult with, because there's other things going on in the maintenance department that y'all may not be aware of. Key's down, people, there's a lot of things that contribute to why that trailer is where it's at, and it hasn't been moved. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's been explained to y'all, but if the board would sit down with Philip, I'm pretty sure y'all could work it out.
Yeah.
But Anna did say that, that what you found out is that they, it needs to be kicked up twice a week.
That's what TECQ says, and it's not being done. And when we met with the previous managers, we had, Philip is a medium, he's aware of what, what was going on. So, and that's why we asked, if there's something that we don't know like that, can we come up with another solution?
Well, yeah, that's what you gotta do.
We're willing to work. We're willing to work with it.
I, I would like to give the fort personnel here some kudos for their, for their deserved, okay? They have taken some steps to make the trash trailer more secure. For example, when we first moved in here, which was January of 2022, it was very common for the top gate to be open. That doesn't sound like a big deal, right? The top of it's open, I can just throw a trash over the top. Yeah, and the birds can go in there, and the raccoons, and the cats, and all the worms going in, and they tear the backs up, they pull it out. The other day, I had a, I wish I had this for a photo contest, picture of about a half dozen buzzards sitting on top. We don't normally get birds of that size, but they closed it. It's a little thing, but it made a big difference. They went around and put holes in the mesh at the top where the birds were going in, they wired it shut. There was a hole in the floorboards at the back of the trailer, about a big round and a half. Saw a cat going in and out of there one day, okay? But a piece of plywood over it. Now, these are not big things, but they make a big difference. You don't see the trash pulled out and strode across the place unless somebody forgets to close the side door or the back door, which happens. Those are the sort of doors that are regularly, and that's where we park our birds, where I sit, I close the door, it's not a big deal. But I, I wanna give them credit where credit's due, because they've done a very good job of that. There's a telephone pole right by the trash trailer, were white goods, people like, or dump. They've been doing a great job here lately. We had a pile last night, this worm's up there, it's gone. Now, there's more that's been put there since then, but they're doing a good job. They're emptying the trash trailer once a week. So like I said, I wanna give them credit where credit's due, but here's the bad stuff. Normally, they don't have a hand for the good stuff.
But you, he picks everything. He comes out in the morning and just picks everything up.
Not every morning.
Not every morning.
Okay, not every.
Yeah, that's my manager down there.
He, he suggested, we don't have locks on the trailer. The door doesn't have locks, they put either a budget straight out. Which gets so look, or, you know, something, it doesn't have a regular lock. So he suggested, Al suggested, when it was gate trailers, that when you pull it open, then you close it, and it locks on again.
Oh, like a, like a gate.
Even a simple arm latch, you turn it into a bracket.
Well, then, Ms. Martines, do we have a problem, or we don't have a problem?
We have a problem. We have a problem.
Okay. And what, what do you announce, what is your recommendation?
I would love to see the trailer moved up a little bit, and, but you might need to check with Philip to find out.
Okay.
Just let us know.
I got a quickie to add. I, I understand this is unit one, and I understand the issue 100%. I just started dogging, and when I'm on number one, I like to hit the ball to the right. We've got the same problem at the condos, so I think whatever you apply to unit one, you ought to also consider into looking into condos. Because if I was gonna be buying a condo and I saw that trash just there, I would not buy a condo.
It took us five years, you have to wait five years. So the other option was, they could send their little ranger, and everybody get garbage cans, you pick up the garbage and haul it out, you know? But of course, that takes more mankind. That Philip would wanna put more employee time out there, so I would see if there's a workaround. Just let us know.
Well, I, I'd like to make a commitment for the whole board, I'm committing you all.
We're already committed. Not that way.
To, because I know it goes on and on, and we'll go look at it, and then it goes on and on, but, but I commit to you that we, we will, we will speak with Philip and, and look at all the things the camera out there also finds, you know, all of the things that could help mitigate it, placement, and, and we will.
Have a resolution.
Yes, Stuart, do you wanna give us a deadline?
Yeah, I gave you a, a month on the first email, I gave you a month on the second email. Why don't we do two weeks?
You can resolve it in two weeks.
Yes, and is that?
See, why not?
Okay? Two weeks. What's, what's that make it?
We could do all that.
Thank you.
Two weeks.
Two weeks of Ms. Martin goes to jail coming after us.
13.
I don't have anything that I won't claim, and so, and I want you and Thor to read that. That is something for the protection of the store for the years to come. We don't do something besides.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We'll take this in the executive session talk. Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
All right. If, if there's nothing else, we are going to go ahead and adjourn into executive vote. Amy?
I just want to make one comment, and I appreciate the board for allowing us to discuss. I've heard more laughter and more funny stuff tonight than I've heard in a long, long time coming from our members. And it's really heartening to hear it, and it's so nice. I appreciate the board not trying to calm things down, letting people have their say, letting everybody laugh. Thank you. Thank you, members. It's been truly an enjoyable experience.
Welcome. You forgot something.
The book starts with the book, and I always can't. Al, this is John Abad, this is... It's all the charity. Ethics, you know, and Lord never had a child. See? Lord, those son of God, we are... I had to...
She's sleeping in the moustache, like she's...
I had to... Say, oh, yes. It's...
You do the film task meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're adjourned to executive session at 6:30.
You didn't state it. You stated what you thought was fact, and it's incorrect. I have a document right here to show you. So let me ask you something, so you don't care about that. Let me, let me put this to you a different way. Let me put this to you a different way. Ma'am, let me speak.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you. That's true. Thank you. And we're rejoining into our open session. From our agenda, we had a discussion on a fine, and that, do we have a motion? I make a motion to table it. All right?
I'll second the motion to table it.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous? And now we have two collections issues. So, number one...
Yeah, you'll have to tell me which one that is.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, mark it, mark it right on the paper. So that way, y'all know which one's one and which one's two.
Do we have a motion to...
Motion to go forward with your union council to handle the foreclosure of properties?
Well, I think it's just, just the lawsuit, just to initiate it.
To initiate the lawsuit.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? All right, and for the second one, second?
Initiate a lawsuit to proceed with a possible foreclosure.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? All right. It is now...
A meeting, a meeting in 24.
Oh, we're gonna...
Oh, you're gonna meet in 24?
Yeah, 24, okay. 9:16, we are adjourned.
All right. Hopefully, things will get easier. Hopefully.